Let's believe this is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Has anybody signed in to present any such items for future meetings? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any corrections, additions to this morning's agenda? Any discussion?
Approval.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the consent agenda items. We've got the approval of the minutes, approval of the travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Set.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Jenna, please call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six is routine business. Six A, we have approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, department head reports. We'll begin with the register of deeds year end report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to report about 2021. And if you want to follow along on, on the, Stacy, is there another one before that? The other one. That one. That shows that that's the breakdown of everything. First off is the transfer fees. And transfer fees are on the deeds based on a dollar per thousand of the purchase price of real estate. We had $273,960.50 in 2021. That is an increase of $73,960.50. The second line is the general fees. That is the recording fees, that $30 per document, per document, and it was $201,585. We showed a decrease in that actually of $4,139. Marriage licenses, we sold 187 at $40 each for a total of $7,480. Excuse me. We decreased by 1,080. Certified copies of the birth, marriage, death, the vital records. The fee is $15 each, and we issued 2,529 for a total of $37,935. We increased on that $1,365. Copies and discs, that's the copies of the PTs, the physical transfers for the Farm Service Agency in Brookings and the Farm Credit Service in Watertown, and also any copies the title company's purchased. We've got $5,911. We decreased by 1,438 on that. We had an increase from 2021, over 2020, in the overall total of $68,666. That sheet that we're looking at is all the breakdown of all the totals that I just told you. The fee, we'll go to the tech fee. You can see that $5,000 in August, or $6,614.43. That's from the tech fee that is on every document. That's $5 per each document. And part of that tech fee goes to the state and goes into a fund that is then divided in August amongst all the counties. And that's what we received from, from the state on that. Like I said, that has all the breakdown. And if you, you know, if you want to look at that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any of that. Let's look at the next page there, Stacy. That is just a comparison of the number of documents, the number of mortgages, deeds, and miscellaneous documents, their number of pages, and that's a comparison between 2021 and 2020. And then that first page that you had there, Stacy, and that is also a comparison here of the totals that I just told you and gave you, and comparing with 2020 and 2021. I was going to mention the total of 2021 of what actually stayed in the county was $487, $487,000.50. That was an increase, like I said, of 66,000, 68,000 actually, over. So we had a very busy year. June was the busiest, the highest total month that in our office since I have been in the office, and that was 24 years in January now. So the real estate market has really, you know, the prices of the real estate has went up, but that is very muchly reflected in the increase of $73,958 in transfer fees. Any questions?
Commissioner Pierce.
How much is in your tech account? No, I was looking for that, and I can't find it.
That, oh, I would say it's around $100,000, maybe, 90, 95,000. You know, I was going to look at, which I did, I was, I had the contract, I was, I was ready to, I went up to Stacy to talk about it. I wanted to really crunch numbers to see how much that costs and how much is actually in my fee account. And I, with the visiting with her, and then I had visited with another county that had done the scanning, and she had done it not this past fall, but in 2020 fall. And she's very unhappy. She had not received the documents yet, the scan, when convention was, in September. So, and I had visited with her, and she hadn't received them yet. And so after I talked with Stacy, and we were talking about that, I reached out to her again, and she still had not received them. And she advised also, I was, I'm not going to sign the contract when I don't get the documents for a year and a half, you know, and with that kind of fee that they charge. And so she too advised, she says, if I knew what now, what I knew, you know, if I knew then, what I know now, she said, I would not have signed that contract. I would not have done it. So I'm still going to reach out to her if, see, and she, with other contact, I've emailed her and stuff. And she said that the person that was in charge of her account had been gone for a period of time, I believe, medical reasons. But I guess my thought is, when I would have something that I could not complete in my job, I would advise to get someone else to take over for that period of time.
How many counties in South Dakota have gone now to electronic filing?
Just off the top of my head, I would say probably 25 to 30.
And are they all with the same company we're looking at, or are there different?
Most generally, yes.
And the one that's having the problem, is that the same company?
Well, see, this is, that's two different things. This is just scanning.
Right. The front of the scanning.
Yeah.
And that's first, right?
Well, that's not, it's not necessary to scan all the documents before we do the electronic. It's just, the old documents are disappearing. You know, they're handwritten in ink, and so we've got to preserve them somehow. I did look into, with the scanning part, too, I did look into renting a big scanner that will do the books that don't come apart. And I also visited with a county that has done that. I was not that impressed with the quality. So I'm really hoping that when I, I reach out to, to a gal that had not received them yet, that if she has finally gotten them, that they're good quality. I did go to Moody County, and she had no problem, of course, they're a small county, and she had no problem. She had hers done at the same time as the larger county did. And the document, the images are very good. And they have, the ones that are in the books that are so light and hard to read, because, like I said, they are disappearing, they had maneuvered it so that they are very good quality, that you can still, you know, read them very easily.
But really, did I understand you right? And then I won't take any more time, sorry, that, that we could move forward on the, getting the recording up, and then work on the scanning?
And then work on the scanning. Mm-hmm. We could do that. You're welcome. Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
County Development, Bob Hill.
Good morning. I put a packet, and if you have any questions on that, I'll be more than happy to answer them. The additional information I had out this morning, some of the big stuff is, we had a PPCC meeting via Zoom. We'll probably have one more via Zoom, and then we may go back to in-person, depending upon the COVID-19 stuff. And speaking of COVID, we do have 120 test kits available. We, last week, we've got a, got another box of 300. We took them to the home show. We had a booth at the home show, and we passed out 150 or so at the, at the home show, and then the leftovers, we got downstairs. We put it on the county's social media site. We didn't do a big time press release, because with 120, they couldn't go real fast. But we do have it out on social media, and I've informed the hospital that we've got them, in case anybody wants them, they can just come down, just like before, come down and pick them up at the office. I had a county fire chief meeting. They discussed some of the American Rescue Plan Act stuff, and they're going to work on, work on some needs from the fire departments physically located in Brookings County. We figured, fire departments in other counties can go do the American Rescue Plan through, through their counties. So we only, only discussed the ARPA plan with the Brookings County Fire Department. I did attend a legislative conference with Commissioner Bartley, and I was, got a note on here to say happy birthday, sir. And during, during the meeting in Washington, I attended Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee meeting. There was something interesting to come out there. There was a resolution, a temporary resolution they tried to pass, talking about qualified immunity for, in this case, they were trying to talk about qualified immunity for police officers. But that's a, that's a slippery slope when you start dealing with qualified immunity, because all county employees, to a certain extent, have qualified immunity. And there's different names for what type of immunity it is. So that's something you may want to keep as a, as a commissioner on your radar in the, in the future. That just, it didn't pass, it was tabled, and, and it's going to be brought up again at the annual NACO convention. So just bear aware of that. I also attended Western Interstate Region, the Rural Action Caucus meeting, and a Capitol, we had a Capitol today, but it was via, they, they brought a couple Capitol staffers to us. We didn't go to the actual Capitol. And the Board of Directors, in-person speakers with several cabinet secretaries, such as the Department of Transportation Secretary, and then the President of the United States actually spoke to us. And they had COVID-19 protection standards throughout the whole city of Washington DC. And of course, when, when the President came in, you talk about lockdown a building with, with metal detectors and stuff. Over the weekend, we had a booth, like I said, at the Brookings Home Show. That's actually sponsored by our local emergency planning committee. That's where the funds I pay for that. That is a local outreach that we do. We, we had a weather radio that we gave away as a, as a door prize. And while I was in Washington, I attended a South Dakota Office of Emergency Management Region Six meeting via the Zoom platform. And there, while I was gone, we also had the towns and township meeting, which I'm sure the weed supervisor will talk about. Basically, what I heard on, on the Zoom call with emergency management was the same thing that you would have heard if you was down at the, down at the towns and township meeting. February 16th, the day I was coming back in, we had a pretty serious truck accident over by the soybean plant outside of Volga. And no injuries, but there was a 100-gallon fuel tank punctured. But the only good thing about the whole situation was, the truck that turned over was hauling soybean meal, and they used that to block, perform like a dam operation to keep the diesel from going into the waterway. So we blocked all that, and they shoved all the contaminated stuff into big totes. And now they're disposing of it per DANR's requirements. And, you know, the commission always, during my evaluations, you always ask, well, how's it working when you do all the emergency management stuff? And what is Richard doing? Well, Richard ran this whole operation. When I landed in Minneapolis, I looked at my phone, and I had text messages blowing all over the place, because that's when it happened. My phone was on airplane mode, and I, I couldn't do anything. But Richard reacted. The sheriff's office got hold of the department, so it ran excellent. And Richard prepared the report, set up the pair, whole nine yards. So I think it's working pretty good. This particular incident, I consider it as one of the serious incidents. We only have one or two serious incidents a year, and this is, this was one of the big ones, when you have that much diesel sitting on the ground. And we was able to stop it. And the, one of the after-action reports or lessons learned out of this one is, I'll be ordering some absorbent socks, the tubes kind of thing, keeping back of the county truck. Fire departments typically take them out, but when you got 100 gallons of diesel, if you don't have the soybean meal, we would have been in trouble. But we had it handled because of the weather conditions and, and the product that was spilled. And other than that, we had an LEPC meeting via the Zoom platform. Friday, this Friday, February 25th, we've got a Midary Township, Big Sioux Dyke meeting at 12:30. That'll be, the location will be in this building. I have to see if we're going to be in room 300 or room 215. March 3rd, there is a joint Brookings County City Planning Commission session for 5:30 in this chambers. I believe March 3rd's a Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. And other than that, that's my report. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Well, we had been taking care, taking crack seal in this past couple of weeks. I'm sure if you guys had driven south of town, you'd see us down there. Attended the interchange pre-con meeting. Sounds like once they can fire up on that with the ground thaw, they're going to get going. Also attended the Weed and Pest Annual Conference down at the BCOAC. Opened up annual bids last week for the highway department, or the week before last, with the highway department. And then 15th and, or 16th and 17th, I sent a couple of guys to the asphalt conference in Pierre. And then you can see my photo there of the bridge. We have bridge beam set, so they are moving right along. Their goal is to get the deck ready to pour, so if we do get a break in the weather, that they get a five-day window, they'd like to get that deck poured. So moving right along. Any questions?
Nothing?
We're trying to stay warm out there. We're watching the weather, but
Sounds good.
Don't know how much snow we're going to get yet.
Thanks, Brian.
Good morning. Had the annual Weed and Pest meeting. Had a really good turnout. It was a very good meeting. There's some things we want to change for next year, agenda-wise. So we will, we've got note made of that. We did pinpoint down, I spoke with Terry Pritchard, and we did pinpoint down a certain day every year that we will have the, the meeting. So there's, there will be no more, should we have it the week of the 15th of February? Should we have it the 23rd of February? It'll be that same day every year. So everybody's on the same page. And I'm glad that finally got dealt with. I guess I could read it to you. It's in your packet. This meeting will be every year, I'll just say this, on the Thursday before the first Tuesday of March. And then the first Tuesday of March is the date the towns, excuse me, the townships' annual meeting each year. It was, it was great. Good food, appreciated Dustin's crew and Dustin's help. He was wonderful. He did a very good job. And thank you to all the speakers. I appreciated that. Last week, I went to hear on Tuesday evening for the Weed and Pest, the annual Weed and Pest Conference. Good information there. Lots of good information. It was, it was a lot, a little bit different than years past. And then also, the light replacement project is on the agenda later in the meeting, and we'll talk about that. It's safety concern. It's so dark in there. In the summertime, we generally all have all three doors open, so it's lit up. But in the wintertime, it's dark in there. So we'll talk about that. Is there any questions? Thanks.
Thanks, Misty. Lori, Finance Officers Report.
Good morning. The finance included in the packet today. Beside that, we have the motor grader, the motor grader. It was sold by, by sealed bids. We need your approval to accept that bid. The paperwork is included in the packet. The elderly tax freeze. This prevents a homeowner's property from increasing in value for tax purposes. You have several qualifications. This is a yearly program. You have to apply every year. It is mentioned on the back of the tax bills that go out. And the deadline to apply for that is April 1st. We received notice from the Department of Revenue of the Consumer Price Index. The CPI for taxes payable in 2023 is 3.0%. And that information has been sent out to all townships, schools, and towns within Brookings County. If a taxing district didn't think they could raise enough tax dollars with that CPI where it is, they can proceed with an opt-out. And procedures for that, we could help them with. Also included is the investment policy. That has been completed for this year. All transfers have been done. So that was good to get that out of the way. In the office, I've been watching several bills out in Pierre, especially those having to do with elections. There's quite a few this year. And for some reason, property taxes was also picked on. So we've been watching those. Petitions. We've got one turned in for Sheriff Marty Stanwick. We have Bev turning in hers for Register of Deeds, and we have three for Commissioner that have been turned in. Kelly Vanderwal, Larry Jensen, and Gretchen Webel. The due date for petitions for parties, for the Democratic or Republican, would be March 29th at 5:00 PM. Um, the due date for petitions for parties, for the Democratic or Republican would be March twenty ninth at five P M. Independent petitions are not due until April twenty-sixth. Kim and I also attended the township meeting. It was really good for us to put some faces to names to, um, converse and meet with the representatives from Pier and just the general, general knowledge that we picked up. So that was nice to attend that. Jennifer and I have been taking part in, um, some webinars with the state. They are starting a new program that is called the Property Tax Modernization Program. And it's a way for them to connect all tax information from all the counties into a database. So say there are bills going through in Pier that are going to affect real estate taxes. The information will all be in one place for them to, to look up stuff. So training, we've been starting with training on that. Um, it's going to really kick in in April. We'll be sending files back and forth. They, um, have been in contact with like our Tyler reps and different reps. So that's hopefully going to make that process easier, but that'll be a nice thing for them to have. And that's about all I have.
Um, any questions from the commissioners? Um, I do want to make sure that we note the be it noted items. The auditor's account with the treasurer payroll and additives total, highway expenditures report. These collected. And then you mentioned that we need action to approve.
You need to accept that bid, yep.
By consensus or by vote? By vote, I would imagine, if it's dollars. So we have in front of us the motor grater bid results. Um, that motor grater and wing unit sold via sealed bids, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, for the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand. The appraised value that we had decided on the previous meeting was a hundred and eighteen thousand. And the winner of that bid was Dakota Iron from Garrettson, South Dakota. So do we have a motion to accept that bid?
I'll make the motion.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Thanks.
Stacy, did we need action on any of those other items for investment policy or any of those? Okay, perfect. Um, we're at about eight fifty-nine, so we'll, um, dig in at nine o'clock for our scheduled agenda item. Would be the second reading, public hearing and action to approve ordinance twenty-two dash zero one. An ordinance authorizing the rezoning of outlot C and D of the northwest quarter, southeast quarter in section eleven. Township one oh nine, north range fifty west in Midary Township. For that, let's see. We've got that ordinance in front of us. Want to make sure I give people time if there's folks arriving at nine o'clock for that public hearing. So it is nine o'clock. I'll take a motion to approve if there is one.
Move approval.
Any discussion? I'll open the public hearing. Any proponents that would like to speak to this agenda item? Any proponents? Any opponents that would like to speak to this agenda item? Any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion by commissioners? Seeing none. Jenna, call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. We'll come back to item seven B at nine oh five and move on to, um, regular business. I did want to mention, um, so that it's in the, in the record, Dustin's, um, report for the Outdoor Adventure Center is in front of you. That was provided. Were there any comments or questions that folks would like to touch on for this before we move on?
I have a question on item number nine. If, um, any of the commissioners know what that's talking about.
Yeah. They're, and this is in the gun range.
Right.
The single door that they have there is kind of having a problem with the seal for the pressure. There's a, there's a pressure difference between the range and the viewing room. And to make those pressures consistent and, and more, I should say more consistent. Um, they're looking, what they're saying is they want a second door that would, would shut off. Right now it's a single door. What I mean by a single door, I'm not talking a double door that you open up. I'm talking a single door and then another door after that. So when this door opens up, all the pressure doesn't leak into the room. It just goes into the second door. And then that closes, second door opens up. So it, it keeps the pressure consistent in, in both rooms uh, for the need of the air handling systems to get rid of all of the, um, the residue and smoke and the, and the lead.
So the creation of a true airlock.
Right.
Sequence of doors.
And just Dustin. Where we were talking about.
Right. And Dustin's been doing a lot of research on other ranges and almost every other range has that system in it. We don't, and we've always had issues with our pressure between the two, losing pressure and, and not having our H V A C stuff work to its capacity because of that loss of pressure. So that was a fix that has been recommended and so we're going to look into that.
Also, also do some of the sound debatement, do with the.
Thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions related to Dustin's report before we move on? Seeing none. Um, item eight eight, action to approve resolution number twenty-two dash zero seven, a plat of lot two of Bullstead's second subdivision in the southwest quarter of section twenty-five township one oh nine, north range twenty, or range fifty-two west of the fifth prime meridian, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Bob, any comments on that one?
Yes, ma'am. We, we heard this at our February first weekly scheduled planning zoning meeting. Planning board, uh, planning commission approved it and sent it to this board with the recommendation that you approve unanimously.
Any other comments from the commission? Hearing none. Jenna, please call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight B, action to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero eight. A resolution designated the contact person to request assistance from the South Dakota Wildland Fire Coordinator, Coordinator pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law forty-one dash twenty A dash eleven and amending resolution twenty-one dash zero three. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is just a resolution as, as part of my duties as emergency manager, as a coordinator, basically. I, they, the fire departments, if they need this type of assistance, they just get ahold of me and then I'd contact the state office and, and get their assistance.
Great. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Excellent. We're going to move back to our scheduled nine oh five, discussion and possible action on the roofing project at the jail. Um, Stacy, were you going to talk through that or was that a Commissioner Bartley and Jensen?
What you have before you is a, uh, there's a roofing project that we need to complete along with and in tandem with the project of the jail. And the two roofs will join each other. And if we decide to do the other, uh, this, this particular roof we're talking about here, later, they're going to have to reseal the whole thing. And it's just probably not the way to go after putting this roof on. The roof on the jail is approximately twenty to twenty-five years old. It's been resealed once. It's going to be needed to be resealed again. Uh, we do have some, some quotes on that and some bids. They are under the bid, bid limit, so we can go ahead and award this and have it done at the same time. Their goal is to start this week. I assume that with the weather today, there's nothing going on on the roof, but, uh, we told them we'd, we'd have it on an agenda item here. This roofing project, because it's a public safety center, is, is eligible for ARPA funding. So I, I would hope that, uh, I don't know if we need to, to, uh, in our action, uh, just state that this would be an ARPA project, I think would be appropriate. And that way we can fund it through the ARPA project. There is a second portion of the roof that we'll put off to a later date yet this summer. Uh, that might exceed our, our bid limits. And if it does, then we'll go out for bids for that. So right now the concern was to tie this in at the same time. They're ready to do the roofing and this would be the appropriate action would be to allow that to happen with the bid that, that we have.
Any further discussion, questions by the commissioners?
Total cost of project. Talking to the price one, two and three combined?
Uh-uh.
No. No.
Area three. Any further discussion? Or is there a motion to approve the addition of area three for a roofing project utilizing ARPA funds?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? I suppose that one would be a roll call as well, Jenna.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Back to item eight C. Action to approve resolution number twenty-two dash zero nine. A resolution authorizing the purchase of corrugated metal pipe, bridge materials and grader blades based on the price established through the county of Beetle, South Dakota bid process. There be a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion or comments, Brian?
About the cheapest bid you're going to get with Beetle since they're right across the street.
Yep.
Um, how is the pricing on culverts now? Is it improved over last year or? They've went up. Um, if you do read through their, you know, there, there is surcharges they can apply towards those culverts or metal products.
Any further questions, discussion? If hearing none, call the roll, please.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight D, action to approve resolution number twenty-two dash ten. A bridge reinspection program resolution for, for use with S D D O T retainer contracts. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I did want to make a comment on this. I've been talking with federal highway, um, in regards to our bridge inspection program. Um, what they're trying to attempt to do is instead of having, you know, like our county, we do all of our bridge inspections in one year. What we're looking at doing is in the future years is splitting those up to do fifty percent of the county one year, fifty percent of the county another year. But the issue is, is the funding of that. Um, if we were to decide to do that right now, we would have to pay that odd year to get us back to a biannual inspection. Whereas the federal highway is looking into the fa, uh, idea of, uh, participating in that odd year. So we wouldn't have to absorb a hundred percent of those funds. Um, so in the future, I believe that, uh, right now it was suggested that we kind of stay as status quo till they get their, um, funding mechanism figured out. But in the future, we are going to probably look at an R F P process put together by, uh, engineering contractors that would kind of help us through, help the federal highway through understanding how we'd want to split those up. So that is a potential that we're looking at doing in the future is split, splitting our bridge inspection program, uh, to, it'd be every year. We'd be doing, uh, our, our bridges partially every year. So just making a comment on that.
Great.
Just a.
Commissioner Pierce.
Go ahead.
Right now we do small structures one year and large structures next year. Is that right?
Correct. There are some structures that do get inspected annually. There's a handful, four or five. But, uh, for the most part, we do our, our large structures on even years.
So I didn't know about those that get done annually and I'd like to know how we pick those out. But in, in what you're looking at here, does that include the small structures?
No, it does not.
So we would still keep doing the small structures every other year? Plus we'd do half the big ones on the same year that we're doing the small structures?
Potentially, yes.
And would it be the same entity that would be doing both of those?
If we decide to.
How do we pick some out that we do annual on? I didn't know we did annual.
It's, um, suggestion upon the engineers, uh, most recent bridge inspections, if they deem it necessary that, uh, if it's below a certain threshold of criteria, that it needs to be inspected annually. And that's, uh, federal highway requirements.
Madam Chair, I may. Uh, one of the things we picked up out at the, uh, NACO convention on the infrastructure funds that are coming down. And most of that's going to come through the D O T for us. And I think the concern that they have is it's a ten-year program for most of the infrastructure issues because of the time it takes the engineer, uh, construct and build and finish these projects. But there's an awful lot of talk about how much work the D O T or the, the infrastructure rules, final rules, which we haven't seen and probably won't for a year. If it goes like ARPA rules, that could take a year, the interim rules and the final rules, and then the final, final rules will come down later. Some of that's going to require that those bridge inspections be up to date, so to speak. So I think as you're referring to doing it fifty fifty, might be the way they're trying to get more of it done. So that things are still ready for the infrastructure program as comes down through the state. And there may be, you know, we've been using the big program and the build program is a new program and there's another program. So we'll have a, well, your job is to keep on top of all that, obviously, uh, as it comes down the pipe and read all those interim rules. And any input that we may have as a county to the D O T, to the feds as far as, uh, implementing those rules, we're going to have to really kind of watch because it's going to be all over the place for a while.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So like I mentioned, right now this would be for our, every bridge in the county that's above twenty foot would get inspected. That's what this is covering right now. But I wanted to mention in the future, we are going to, to look to split that up upon suggestion from the federal highway, so.
Well, and there's some discussion of directing the state D O T to, uh, spend those funds even in township bridges. So we'll see where that goes with the interim rules.
Yep.
Great. Commissioner Pierce.
I would be interested, once we start working on the five-year plan again and, and you come in and talk to us about that, know which bridges we're having annual inspections on based on the engineer's report and how those play into our five-year plan? I'd like to see that.
A lot of that did come last year. You know, the, the funds that were eligible for on that local federal program. Uh, you know, I believe there was a handful, it was four or five, that they were on the top of the list for the worst first. So.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move back to our scheduled nine fifteen. Um, item seven C is our nine fifteen public hearing and action to approve resolution number twenty-two dash zero six. Supplemental budget resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion with commissioners? Now we'll open the public hearing. Any proponents of the action on the table? Any proponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion by commissioners?
Just real quick, the, the million fifty thousand, I see that it signed out of fund, transferred out of fund balance and then transferred in then to the above chunk there, is that right?
Yes, so this is money coming out of general fund.
Fund balance to fund a, a project that we are.
Yes, we're taking it out of a signed fund balance and then it gets expensed out of transfers out. So that's what you see there kind of in that last section. And then it goes into the three oh four fund, um, for the jail project. Any other questions? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move back to my spot. Item eight E, action to approve. Item eight E, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash ten, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Eureka Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Any comments?
Um, the only one that I wanted to make on this is, and I think it might be just an error, but we need to delete that third page map on this one Stacy. If you scroll down, I was looking at it this morning. That was the Sioux Valley, or yeah, that was Otter Tales map that got attached to that one.
So that attachment does not apply to this request?
Yeah, oh, meant that one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Pierce.
On the um agreement itself, I didn't see. I, I had thought we were amending our um applicant, applications for occupancy to say that if um there was a road that needed to come in, that we don't pay to move stuff. Is that not applying to this type of, of application or is that just electrical poles? What are we doing?
Um, upon review by the state's attorney's office, Ben Kleinjohn suggested that we could use the, the application that we have, had been using. Um, I'll, I'll defer any of those further questions to the state's attorney's office.
We're just gonna use the agreement that we've used in the past. That was Ben's recommendation, so. If you have concerns or questions regarding that, I, I would visit with Ben on that.
And I, I just thought that based on what happened on thirty-fourth, that, that we were looking at amending these forms so that we don't have the cost if we need to do some work in our right-of-way.
Yeah, one of the things he mentioned was that the past agreements allow enough flexibility moving forward. So he was comfortable just using this form, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight F, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash eleven, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Eureka Township. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight G, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash twelve, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Argo Township. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight H, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash one-three, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Otter Tail Power Company in Afton and Sherman Townships. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion on this one? No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight I, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash one-four, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Brookings Municipal Utilities in Trenton and Aurora Townships. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Any comments?
I'd like to point out that this is just the intersection of thirty-fourth and twentieth that I signed this permit for. So it just covers the stubout to uh the intersection that's going to be worked on uh with the interchange.
Sounds good. Any comments by commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, item J, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash zero two, an abatement application made by Madison Aircraft LLC for parcel number four zero nine nine one dash four zero 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 five dash zero 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 dash two zero in the amount of one thousand forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Jenna, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item K, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash zero three, an abatement application for parcel number four zero two five six dash zero zero three zero zero dash zero zero six dash zero zero in the amount of two thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
We, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on this one?
What's the reason for the abatement?
This one here is an application for disabled veterans property tax exemption where their date of award was retroactive to the date of application, so we can go back and abate taxes based on that date.
Any further questions? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item L, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash zero four, an abatement application by Ryan Evans for parcel number four zero nine 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 dash zero 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 nine dash zero six five dash zero zero in the amount of ninety dollars and forty-eight cents. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item M, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash zero five, an abatement application for parcel number four zero three six five dash zero zero six zero zero dash zero zero two dash zero five in the amount of two thousand eighty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just again, since we don't have a name, the reason for the abatement is?
Same as before, retroactive date of award.
Any further conversation on that one? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item N, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash zero eight, an abatement made by Catherine Clark for parcel number four zero five zero four dash zero zero three zero zero dash zero one zero dash zero zero in the amount of five hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Just a little background on this one here. This was a sketching error that was made by our office. All of the, the residences out on the reserved whitetail path are on crawl spaces. And when you go to define, to sketch the property, you can choose between slab, crawl or basement. And this one was a basement in error and the added value resulted in the abatement amount above.
Thank you. Any further conversation on this one? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item O, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash ten, an abatement application for parcel number four zero four five eight dash zero zero seven zero zero dash zero one zero dash zero zero in the amount of two thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and fifteen cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any comments on this one?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any further conversation? Hearing none, call the roll.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item P, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash eleven, an abatement application made by the William T. Kelmas Revocable Living Trust for parcel number three six nine six zero dash one one zero five one dash one four three dash five five in the amount of one hundred fifty dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item Q, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash twelve, an abatement application made by Sean E. Storehog uh at Exfer, parcel number four zero four nine zero dash zero zero seven zero dash zero zero three dash zero zero in the amount of three hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce. Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item R, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash one-three, an abatement application made by George S. Fernrick Jr. for parcel four zero five one seven zero zero four zero zero dash zero zero three zero dash zero zero in the amount of seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce. Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item S. Action to approve abatement twenty-two dash one-four, an abatement application made by Prairie Meadow Inc. for parcel number four zero nine seven zero dash one one zero five zero dash three five four dash zero five in the amount of thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Abstain.
Pierce.
Abstain.
Bartley.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item T, action to approve abatement twenty-two dash one-five, an abatement application by Prairie Meadow Inc. for parcel number four zero nine seven zero dash one one zero five zero dash three five four dash zero zero in the amount of one hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman.
Abstain.
Pierce.
Abstain.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item U, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash one-six, an abatement application made by Prairie Meadow Inc. for parcel number four zero three three eight dash zero zero one zero zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Pierce.
Abstain.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Abstain.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item V, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash twenty-five, an abatement application made by John H. Mills for parcel number four zero four eight seven dash zero 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 dash zero 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 dash zero zero in the amount of three hundred eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item W, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash thirty-one, an abatement made by Lake Platinum LLC for parcel two one zero 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 dash one zero nine four nine dash zero six one dash zero zero in the amount of eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item X, action to approve abatement number twenty-two dash thirty-three, an abatement application made by LG Everest Inc. for parcel number zero four zero 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 dash one one zero four nine dash three one four dash zero zero in the amount of eleven dollars and twelve cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those, uh, call the roll please.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item Y, we are so far into the many, many letters. Item Y, action to approve the low bid for the twenty-twenty-two Brookings County Surfacing Project at Bose Construction Inc. of Brookings, South Dakota. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Very competitive bid opening here. Um, we had four bidders total. Um, you guys can see there, um, splitting first and second bid at thirty-five thousand is pretty, pretty close, so. All the bid tabs turned out good, so I would be good with the engineer's suggestion.
Great. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item Z, action to approve highway bids. And we have to take these one at a time. Uh, so the first one is I, action to approve the bid for three-quarter inch crushed gravel on all items listed from Rose Construction, Nittenberg Construction Company, Sturzinger Construction and Sturzinger Crushing Inc. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item two, action to award the bid for two hundred fifty pounds of crushed quartzite riprap, one hundred fifty pound erosion stone crushed quartzite, one inch by number four crushed quartzite and crushed quartzite ballast number four on all items listed from LG Everest. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I just have a question for Brian on I and the, these first two. How are our prices comparing to last year? Are we, are we seeing a real bump up? You don't have to give me exact numbers, but what's your observation?
Pretty comparable.
Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Horzma.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item three, action to award the bid for HR class asphalt on all items listed from Bowes Construction and Donec, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
One of the things that I would like to point out on any of the asphalt products that we are using, um, we are looking at about a two hundred dollar per ton increase on our asphalt. So you asking about the comparison and pricing, that is one area that we are seeing a very large increase on was our petroleum products.
Is that because of oil? That oil increase?
Any further discussion on item three? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item four, award to ac- action to award the bid for asphalt patching on all items listed from Bowes Construction. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five, action to award the bid for road oil on all items listed from Flint Hills Resources and Jebro, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Um, item six, action to award the bid for equipment rentals on all items listed from Prusman Contracting, Rounds Construction, and Titan Rentals. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, our emergency manager discussed this with me, but, uh, I had reached out to some contractors, nearly all the contractors here in town, but, uh, these would be the bid prices that we would use in the event that we had had an emergency, and I've already discussed that with Bob, so, um, that does tie in with his, his plan too.
Any other comments? Call the roll please.
Johnson?
Right.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven, action to award the bid for crane work, crane men, and driving piling all, on all items listed from Holloway Bridge and Culvert, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Right, what is, is this for us if we, you know, normally we?
Last year, we had bought off another county's bid, Ryan, and we had Holloway coming and do some maintenance work. We had some bridge decks lifted off and we, we repaired some bridges, that's, that's covering this. We're not actually bidding a bridge here, it's just for maintenance work.
Any further discussion? Call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight, action to award the bid for PVC lining on all items listed from Subsurface, Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Any discussion?
Last year, we also bought off, uh, another county's bid when we lined some pipe. And now we just decided to bid it on our own. Uh, there's potential areas that we are looking at lining, um, that does not rip up the road or close the road down. The, the three areas that we did last year where there was two pipes north of White and one pipe south of town here on seventy-seven, we didn't have to impede any traffic when we, when we had that done. Um, so if we do have a pipe that fails or, or is in the potential of failing, we'd be looking at using this, so we wouldn't have to close the road down.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, before you move on, I have a question.
Yes.
And I guess it's for Stacy. It seems to me in the past, when we've had these bids, we've listed the bid price on the agenda so that people would have those dollar amounts that they were following along, and more importantly, that they show up in our minutes. Um. And we didn't do that this year, is there a reason for that?
So they got, they're in the packet, um. I don't, I don't think we've ever listed them in the minutes, all of the different prices in the minute, or in the, on the agenda itself, but the, each individual piece of this spreadsheet will get put in the minutes. With, um, next to what the, next to all of the things that you've been approving, so.
Any other questions before we move on? Agenda item double A. Under, um, approval of additional highway bid agreements. Um, we'll take those all one at a time as well. Action to approve agreement twenty-two dash one-five, in agreement with Bowes Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for three-quarter inch crushed gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing then call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash one-six, in agreement with Nittenberg Construction Company of Estilline, South Dakota for three-quarter inch crushed gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item three, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash one-seven, in agreement with Sturzinger Construction of Elkton, South Dakota for three-quarter inch crushed gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item four, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash eighteen, in agreement with Sturzinger Crushing of Taunton, Minnesota for three-quarter inch crushed gravel. Is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash one-nine, in agreement with LG Everest of Sioux Falls, South Dakota for two hundred and fifty pound crushed quartzite riprap, one hundred and fifty pound erosion stone crushed quartzite, one inch, number four, crushed quartzite, class A, and crushed ballast, number four. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash twenty, in agreement with Bowes Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for HR class asphalt. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item seven, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash twenty-one, in agreement with Donec, Inc. of Prinsburg, Minnesota for HR class asphalt. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash twenty-two, in agreement with Bowes Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for asphalt patching. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine, action to approve agreement number twenty-two dash twenty-three, in agreement with Flint Hills of Marshall, Minnesota for road, road oil. Is there a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item ten, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash twenty-four, in agreement with Jebro, Inc. of Sioux City, Iowa for road oil. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eleven, action to approve agreement twenty-two dash twenty-five, in agreement with Holloway Construction of Parker, South Dakota for crane work, crane men, and driving pilings. Any, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item twelve, action to agree, approve agreement number twenty-two dash twenty-six, in agreement with Subsurface, Inc. of Moorhead, Minnesota for PVC lining. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes.
Okay, Brian, one question I thought of here, um, like with Flint Hills and Jebro, um, for road oil, do we have any minimums or requirements to purchase a certain amount from them?
No, we don't. I kind of given them an idea what we're going to use, and the reason that I've started accepting them both is at times, um, not saying that each entity doesn't have their, their trucking lined up, but at times we may have difficulties, uh, getting the oil to us via trucks, so I do accept both.
Yeah, because I mean, there's a pretty good difference between the two.
There, there's a very large difference, um, I, I do understand that, but if we have a contractor here, um, and say one load or two loads might keep them going, I, I guess if we do have to pay that little bit extra, it, uh, does help our, in, in, overall end price. I know that it's, there's quite, it's just about a hundred dollars. I, I understand that, but, uh.
Well, like, like I said, I just didn't know if there was minimums there, because then they have to keep a certain amount on hand, knowing that they're there, so I just didn't.
I've been talking with, uh, Jebro on that, because overall, we're going to attempt to get the, the lion's share of our oil out of Marshall. But, uh, that price may change. And they also, if, if we look at, uh, Flint Hills, if we do see a very large surge in oil, they may reject our bid.
All right, thank you.
Super. Moving on, item double B. Action to approve, approve change order number eleven for the Brookings County Detention Center project in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion?
I'd kind of listed out what those changes were as part of my staff report, if you had any questions on that at all.
Good for me. Good? Hearing none, let's call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item double C. Action to approve the purchase of a de-electric barrier discharge ionization system for the government center. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Would like to ask, it's for the government center here, this building.
It is this building.
Is this a shared expense with the city then?
This would be a shared expense with the city, the fifty-two forty-eight split on that nineteen-six. And then I believe this would be ARPA eligible as well.
Yes, it would be.
So.
All right, so just note somewhere in the, uh, the motion that we would apply for ARPA funding?
Yes.
It's eligible.
Yep.
Okay.
And this comes at the encouragement of the Joint Powers Board, so we talked about that in our last meeting. Any other questions or further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item DD, action to declare a C-three XP cleaning companion as surplus property to be sold via online auction. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a piece of cleaning equipment that we've had again here for the government center since, um, uh, I think since we've been here in this building, and it's just hasn't been used, and so, um, a recommendation from maintenance supervisor Terry, item E, suggesting that we surplus it, this also was in front of Joint Powers Board a couple of weeks ago, and they approved it to be surplused as well.
What is it?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a spray cleaning system, like you spray down large surfaces and then it air dries, and it left everything looking like, yeah, like it, so just wasn't getting used, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item EE, action to approve a lighting project for the weed shop. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions for Misty? She mentioned it a little bit in her staff report about the need for additional lighting for safety ability to maneuver out there.
Do these, will we qualify for anything with, uh, putting LEDs in through the city at all?
Working with them, I'm working with them, writing on a report, uh, I forget his name, but I visited with the gentleman for BMU before I left for Huron last week. Him and, um, the, the lady that, uh, is the overseer of this program, come and looked at the lights in the shop. I have not heard back from them. I was going to go, I'll, I'll make a call to them and then get that information in for the next packet. But we are working with BMU for any kind of a kickback for replacing these old lights.
Any other discussion or questions? Yeah.
That's, that kind of, yeah.
Right. All right, hearing none, call the roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Borsma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item FF, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a seasonal ATV driver in the weed and pest department. We have a motion to approve. Any discussion?
This is typical ATV driver, I have one individual not coming back this year, so.
Any questions for Misty? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you.
Stacy, is your report rather lengthy?
It's not too bad, did you want to let Dan go first?
Since we have a, since we have a guest participating in Dan's presentation, why don't we swap order with the state's attorney and commission department director? So we'll skip to item number 10, the state's attorney's office report to talk about our diversion program.
Thank you Commissioner Borsma. Well, we're gonna focus on the underage drinking diversion. Our person to kind of help explain the class process is Robin Ertz with Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. So this slide up here on your screen, this shows the data, the numbers, from when this first, first began back in March of 2019, all the way through last week. And so we've had a total of four hundred and five successful participants. Each required to do ten hours of community service, so that's where we're getting the four thousand hours. And then they're, they're asked to complete that community service under supervision. And they have to provide proof of that supervision and completion of those community service hours that, there are several participating nonprofits here in the city of Brookings that provide those community service hours. One of the bright spots, of course, is that after the program is finished, some of those individuals return to those nonprofits to continue volunteering. And then one of the things we're, we're also very proud of is the fact that we haven't had to ask for any additional budget, dollars to run this program. But instead, the participants have paid Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. Is it approximately a hundred dollars, a little over a hundred dollars to do the diversion program?
A hundred dollars even from each individual.
A hundred dollars even. And then if we're looking at four hundred and five.
Can you hear me?
Successful participants, you know, that's over forty thousand dollars. Added revenue for one of our important agencies here in the city of Brookings, one of our mental health providers. So very proud of that. Then we also expunge their arrest record after thirteen months from the date of their completion. And we also ran those numbers and over eighty percent remain arrest free during that period, which far surpasses the national average for recidivism. And then over ninety percent of those that choose to do the program successfully complete both the class, as well as the community service. So it's really been a win-win for the, you know, the offender, the community. And I think we're really providing a, a service because the, the flip side of this is that, these same individuals who complete the diversion program, the only thing that they would be required to do if they came into court, is pay the fine, but then they would have that criminal conviction. So we're getting reinvestment into the community through the community service hours. They're getting a takeaway from the instruction that Robin provides, all instead of just a criminal conviction. So we're hoping to build on the success. It's already been three years since we started this. We've recently branched out into providing this type of alternative diversion program for misdemeanor marijuana offenses. But I wanted just to bring Robin in to talk about that class specifically. And then maybe just provide some brief summary, some key things that you think the commission should know about that class and maybe what you've seen in the last three years.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come and, and present and I'm open to any questions and clarifications that I can offer. Where to begin? I think it's been very interesting. I've worked in prevention and treatment for a number of years. And when you look at this population in particular, I'm gonna say the range is seventeen to twenty-one. I have had high school seniors who have participated in this program as well because they've incurred a violation in the community. The recidivism rate is off the charts, to be honest with you. You're lucky to get, you know, twenty percent success with this age population. So when you look at this from a broad lens, I think it's a combination of, don't mind me, I'm gonna say this grammar here, I scare the bejesus out of them with the cold hard facts in relation to addiction and going down this road. And then the, a key piece is the link between the community service that they provide and having them realize the context in which they violate because they don't often make that leap. And I think that's been a huge proponent in a positive way to have these young people successful. I provide an educational component about addiction and the brass bones of that. Opens their eyes a little bit. When you look at age of first use, typically you're talking nationwide about fourteen years of age. And what we can do now with the information and support that we have from research, we can demonstrate the neurological change that that makes on that individual. And so I, I scare them and get them looking in a different direction and plotting out their goals and objectives. And tying that back to their goals, for example, of nursing students, pharmacy students, education majors, all of these types of things. And to have this one offense on their record can derail their career. So it's stepping back and taking a good hard look at what it is you want to achieve and where you want to go. But I think a key piece again is, is that link to the community service because they don't often see that component with the violation only. I've gotten a lot of good feedback from the young people regarding working at the Humane Society. Beta was a piece of that for quite some time, they pulled back. They work at United Way, there's a variety of community-based organizations that they support, so.
Yeah, Habitat for Humanity.
Habitat Humanity is a big one. We've even had some young men go out to the city, you know, and, and help them with trash and, and whatnot. But it puts everything on a different level when they're providing that service. They see things in a completely different light.
Can you talk about too, about some of the individuals that you've seen complete the program, then follow up after the program for further mental health, maybe issues that they've identified?
Well, and, and it's, it's been a conduit to open that door. Oftentimes that population isn't open to asking for help. And as you can imagine, and I'm sure you all know, in the last three years, last two in particular, we've had a significant increase in anxiety and depression in our young people. And one of the discussions I have is, as I said, I have seventeen to twenty-year-olds. Many of them were derailed with the onset of COVID. They weren't able to attend prom, they weren't able to walk for graduation. Many of them had made plans for the fall for their ongoing education and they weren't sure that was going to come to fruition. So that all built a certain level of anxiety and questioned about paths and so on and so forth. So we've had a good number of them stay in contact with our mental health and SUD services to just offer that support and work through issues that they've been having and, and be that sounding board and help guide them in their own future plans.
And how long is that class that you teach?
It's only three hours. But I cram a lot into three hours.
Two different sessions or is that?
No, one session.
Just one session, usually at night or?
No, it's, I, every after, Tuesday and Thursday afternoons from two to five. I was doing it only once a week, but with the numbers that we've had, I've added a day. And plus, we're trying to get a bit better handle on getting them in and out in a, in a more timely fashion. As you can imagine, that population sometimes can be difficult to stick to deadlines and they're constantly asking for additional time. But we've worked around that and got them pretty spot on about it. So I think that's improving.
So part of the program requirements is, so Robin's sort of, their first point of contact, when they come to court, they're referred, they're given another court date. And so they have to complete the education component as well as the community service component within about forty-five days. And so they're then directed to Brookings Behavioral where they sign up for further class. And then they get a class certificate that Robin signs off on. And then they get a community service checklist as well that the supervisor at one of the nonprofits has to sign off on. Then they bring that paperwork to our office and then we verify that. And then we go ahead and dismiss it upon proof of that completion. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of how that works. Robin's been fantastic to work with, both from a, you know, a flexibility standpoint, but then also she really actually does care and believes in this program. And these programs are only successful because of people like Robin. So I, you know, I really appreciate that on behalf of the county. Robin, your services as well as the entire staff over at Brookings Behavioral. This program's not going away and I think the numbers prove that it has been successful. And we're gonna continue, continue to, you know, push, push programs like this. So, thank you. I'll, any questions from the commissioners?
Dan, what did you say your look back time is to look and see if they have another offense?
Yeah, so by statute, sponge thirteen months from the date of completion. And that's, that's found in statute if they complete a court-approved. Then we, we'll, we'll run their triple I, going back those thirteen months from the date of their completion to see and ensure that they've remained arrest-free. And then once we're able to verify that, we file the, the expungement. And so this number, this eighty percent, that's looking at the pool of individuals that, where we filed the expungement and then those that have not remained arrest-free. And so that's a smaller pool just because, you know, you gotta wait that thirteen months.
About a year.
Yeah.
That you're looking at, that no repeat.
Correct.
Robin, are you hearing any feedback from any of the nonprofit agencies or folks that are supervising?
I'm sorry. Appreciative, as you can imagine. To get volunteers and there have been periods of time where they've had to shut down or close because of, because of issues. But every one of them, without exception, is so appreciative of the support and help. And as, as noted, some of the, some of the youth have continued relationships with those entities post-you-have-to type of thing, which is, I think speaks volumes to the sense of community that they feel here and support, even though they kind of messed up. But they're supported and, and so, yeah, we get a lot of positive feedback from United Way. We've had a number of youth participate in the gap program. And that's been extremely helpful with all of them, very positive.
Thank you for everything you do.
We give it a go.
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
You bet.
Dan, anything? Thank you. We'll move backwards. Item nine, Stacy.
The surplus cash analysis was provided, we're at about seventeen percent for month end of January. A little bit lower than kind of that ten-year average, if you look at that. But again, still very early in the year where we have a lot of expenses going out and we haven't seen a lot of revenue yet for the first part of the year. So not too concerned about that at this point. This is the final kind of recap of the expense for the, the chiller. If you remember, this past summer, we had the, the chiller fire, the, that went out. We're still working through, I haven't heard from, back from insurance exactly on how this will all look yet. But there's a kind of a fire portion and then there's a failure portion. And so they're still kind of working through that. We do have a ten thousand dollar deductible. So, but we're gonna be looking at getting some reimbursement back from insurance on that, so. The device stipend, I first need to apologize to Commissioners Krogman and Bartley because I'm, after you were re-elected, I was, I failed to let you know that you should have gotten this at the beginning of last year. So I'm playing makeup, but I looked at that form as I realized this and it was, it was a little outdated. So I made some adjustments. If you are okay with these adjustments, I visited with, I, I think Sean and I kind of went through and hammered it, hammered it out, kind of what it needed to look like now, if you're okay with that. I do have additional forms here for you, the two of you to sign off on as, as well here sometime later today. But if you're okay with that form, the updated form as you read through it, do I have head nods? Yes, okay. We did get the January month-end executive summary from Chad Nelson, our project manager with the jail project. You can kind of see his, his monthly update on what's been going on there. And then at the last meeting, when I gave my annual report, I believe it was Commissioner Pierce had asked to see the FTE change, changes. So I looked back at year end. So in the commission office, there was, we gained one FTE, but that was our veteran service officer. If we recall, we, so we lost that in another, in another place. County Development, 4H, these all pretty much stayed the same. Community Health actually went down one. We had the full-time person quit and they just wanted kind of that, or about halftime, point six, point seven, five time person stayed on. So we, you saw a little bit of a decrease there. No changes here to these departments. Finance, Highway Planning, Zoning Register of Deeds. So Sheriff. Five point six six, they went up. That was the addition of, I think, some, a, a part-time deputy and maybe that temporary, that temporary deputy sheriff was included in that. Also saw an increase in correctional officers, the, the three full-time correctional officers and a couple new deputies as well. That's kind of what makes up that. And for the state's attorney, it looks like a point five increase. We took the intern off because they haven't had an intern for quite some time, so that's why it's only point five. But they gained that human services assistant, so. And then the minus two is the Veterans Human Services Department with that no longer exists because those got absorbed into commission and state's attorney. Weed stayed the same, BCOAC had a couple, we did put the assistant. We gained the assistant and then an additional, some other part-time staff as well, so. Any questions on that?
Our new maintenance person shows up where on, on that?
That position, that position didn't come into existence until one-one. So these are as of twelve, at the end of next, or end of last year. So they will show up, they'll actually show up all under commission in twenty twenty-two for maintenance staff.
So that's three, is that right?
So yes, there will be, there will be a little, it will look like an additional FTE under commission at, starting one-one of twenty twenty-two.
Some of the part-time are based off of hours that they get, it's not necessarily guaranteed that they're, so you could have.
It's based off of people, not really hours.
Hours work.
Right, yeah. So like for instance, out at the BCOAC, you've kind of told Dustin however many, however, you know, the number of part-timers that you need to fill the hours that you, that, that you need. So it's not that they're getting full-time hours or even close to that. It's just that we've gotten these, this many more people to cover the hours that need to be covered, so.
So you've combined the full-time with the part-time and there's a significant difference in cost in those.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, this is literally looking at people. Yeah. Yeah.
Do you add those up? So what's our total at the bottom?
Six point one-six. New.
Which again is people.
Right.
FTE positions. Yeah. Yeah, a lot of that is, yeah, most of that is the jail, yeah.
Right, and then I just look at like the BCOAC, we added a full-time, one full-time position, but two half-times. And so it's up, you know, it ups to two, but actually the main cost directly to us is the one full-time. Because the part-times, it just gives them more options to use the part-time hours and stuff. And there's no benefits involved in that, so.
I just think it's important just to look at because county government is not a business that we want to grow more employees necessarily. So just that we're keeping an eye on it and making sure we're meeting the needs of our citizens, but not growing more than what we need to be doing, I think it's important.
I think the, the places where we've grown as a public service, law enforcement is necessary. Outdoor Adventure Center is part of the public service that we provide for quality of life for Brookings County residents. And so in the kind of bureaucratic sense, not growing, but in the public service sense, making sure that we're, we're being responsible.
Thank you for doing that, Stacy.
Yeah, yeah. And then this is that fund balance at year end, a report, I think Commissioner Krogman had asked about this. Trying to blow this up here a little bit. So you can see if we're growing fund balance or not growing fund balance. And by fund, blue is general fund, orange is road and bridge, and then the gray is the county building fund. The reason general fund dipped last year is because we took a lot of money out of general fund and moved it over to the jail project fund. And we took money out of general fund and moved it to highway for the interchange project. So that's why it looks like, because we did, we spent down our fund balance to fund those other projects. Highway, that's kind of been a goal over the last couple of years too. The board doing some of these bridge projects and getting some, that's why you see that dipping below because we're spending down that fund balance because, to, to get some of these projects done. The thr, the building fund as well dipped below because we did take over two million dollars out of that fund last year and moved it into the three oh four fund to do the jail project. So that's why you see those all kind of down dipped in, in the negative for, for last year. So I did add this as a slide in my annual presentation. So this will get added as a slide for next year when I do, it'll be just included as part of that, so. Any questions on that?
Thank you for that.
Nope, you are welcome.
My, my concern a little bit is we just have to make sure after this large project and all the bridges that we're doing, we need to see where we're at here.
Right.
Before we take on.
Additional things.
Projects and stuff like that, just to, just to see where we're at in the fund balance. Because, you know, I have in my mind a certain reserve that we need to have. And, and we had quite a bit of funds in the fund balance, which I've always said, and I'm glad we're, we're using them towards something that's sustaining in long-term. Bridges and law enforcement, you know, jails and expansions and stuff. But I think we, after the spending spree that we've been going on the last few years, I think we gotta step back a little bit and just see where we're at with fund balance and where we're at financially as a county. Thank you for this.
Yep, you are welcome. The last thing that I included in your packet was this information that got, it was actually handed out. Terry Sletton, who is like the executive director of Towns and Townships, she's out of Huron. She was at the weed and pest and the township, towns and townships meeting last week and handed this out to the townships. This, if you recall, is that culvert inventory process that we went through and received some funds for that rural access infrastructure funding. You can see that the inventory for the townships is not actually due until June one of this year. We've got that done last year for all of our townships. In August, there's another three million dollars that was, I think it was House Bill twelve fifty-nine, if I have my numbers right, from twenty twenty-one that funded this. So this other three million, the first three million was divided out amongst the town, amongst the counties to use to conduct the culvert inventory. What we have decided to do is the highway is not, instead of paying the highway back out of that fund to conduct that inventory, Brian said, let's just leave that money in that fund, then it can go towards projects. So we'll get a portion, another portion of this other three million. It'll be based on the culvert, culvert inventory numbers that come in from every county across the state. So I don't really know what that number looks like just yet. But we'll get that and then that will be added into that same rural access infrastructure fund that we have set up. Then from there, we need to come up with an application process for townships to apply to the county to, for projects to get, to use up those rural access infrastructure funds that are in that fund. So we'll need to sit down here sometime over the summer and come up with the application process. We have an application, right, that we've been using over the past few years. So I think we can just kind of look at that and tweak that a little bit. I know one of the rules for these roads is that a structure or a culvert not be on a minimum maintenance road. So we'll have to look at that. So we'll sit down and, and, and look at that. But we'll probably have, I'm guessing, if I, you know, if we kind of base it, you know, if it's a similar percentage, because we've got about seventy-eight thousand, is that right, that we got in, got through the first round? So, you know, probably about that. And so we'll have hundred and forty thousand dollars in that fund that needs. you know, probably about that. And so we'll have $140,000 in that fund that needs to be used on these small structures in, in townships. So we'll be looking at that application process. Applications are due to the county October 31st. And then by January 15th of 2023, you as a county commission have to award those applications. And we can do that at any time. It's just that January 15th is that deadline. So I wanted you folks to see this and be kind of aware of what that timeline looks like as well. But, any questions on that?
When the inventory, and this might be a Brian question. When the inventory was completed, were the small structures on the minimum maintenance roads, were they also inventoried?
We took record of them. And the reason we did that is if a township were elect to remove that section of road from the minimum maintenance posting, that we already had it, so we, but they are, they are recorded, just they can't be used towards our number.
Right. But I, I guess what my question was more, after sitting through the Town and Townships meeting, I, I believe that there will be townships that are going to remove the minimum maintenance designation on some roads. And when they do that, do we have to update our inventory before June 1st, or we're ready to go on the inventory as relates to small structures on those roads that might have been minimum maintenance but no longer are?
I would need to receive the motion or the, the minutes from them. And we would also, that would also have to be registered with DOT to remove them from the minimum maintenance designation. So there is a little bit of a process that the townships do need to realize that they need to step through in order for those roads to be moved off the minimum maintenance designation.
And I, I think that's good, but do we have the inventory part done on those structures?
Yes, we do.
So is it possible for communication to come? Now that we're done with our meeting, from the township meeting where we talked about that minimum maintenance, and I, I did talk with some township supervisors that I know plan on changing some roads, could we send out some data that incorporates what Brian just said?
Yes, we could. Go ahead.
Lori, what, what time in the spring do the townships have to record their miles with the auditor's office to receive their allocation from state?
Their annual meeting is always the first Tuesday of March. So I think that they do that then, I believe. And they turn that all in as part of their annual, their annual paperwork into the auditor's office by the end of March, I think, approximately. So I think, I mean, we can send some things out. Once the inventory is complete after June 1, there is a website that they can go to. It's actually, they could go to it now and look at that to see, see all of the culvert inventory information that the highway put into that program or into that website at the state level. I mean, we can certainly send out information. And I think we would do that once we have that application form ready and done. And we would send out probably the application and a letter saying, if you want to be, you know, here's the criteria. If you have a project in mind, here's the application form and here's the deadline.
I, I just think it would be helpful to the townships if we said all of those steps that Brian just said. If you're thinking, based on the meeting that we had, that you're going to change the designation on a minimum maintenance road, these are the steps you need to follow to qualify that small structure on those previously noted minimum maintenance roads to qualify for the program. I, I just think that that's something that might be complicated enough that we should give some guidance to the townships.
Do you know roughly how long that process takes? Is it three, four months?
Well, I, I don't, I can't speak for the DOT on this one, but a lot of it has to be acted on by the, their board also.
Okay. Because I'm just looking at, if August 31st is the structure improvement plans, they would have to be noted, listed prior to that plan coming in and approved. So if they don't move on it by April 1st, they're going to miss the window.
And I believe townships, their annual meeting's coming up. And they're, they also have to impose their tax levy.
Yep.
And I think at that time, they'll decide if they're going to have the minimum maintenance roads or not, and they'll lift that and inform us, I guess. Because it needs to be registered with the finance office and then it can go on to the DOT.
There's a, there's several things. I mean, for a township to even apply at all for these funds, they have to have a tax levy of at least 50 cents or have an opt-out. I mean, that, up to 50 cents. Yeah. So basically, they have to have a levy. They have to levy for property taxes, something. Have the opt-out. So yeah, and they are required to do that structure improvement plan, similar to kind of our five-year plan. They have to come up with a plan as well. So getting that culvert inventory information to them will assist them in, in completing those plans. So I think we need to visit with, we can visit with Brian and, you know, get them the information on how to access that information online. So that they can do that. Ryan?
Do we have no time limit to have the projects done by? Or is there a certain amount of time that the funds need to be expended by? I mean, this is a one-year deal, is at the, at the end date, the funds are awarded, we're done? Or does this move on to?
We'll have one more year that we will receive that, that nine million total was set aside on House Bill 1259. And the first $3 million went towards the inventory to get an accurate inventory. The second round will be this year, obviously, for replacements.
And of that $6 million, the state will tell us what we get in Brookings County, is that right?
Correct.
Based off there. And so we'll have that, those funds. Then those, is there a time limit that we have to use those funds?
I don't believe so.
So the first round comes through and we only, say we get a million dollars, or we get 500,000 of it, and we only expend 300. Do we have another year to get the other 200 spent?
I don't know that there's a time limit on it.
I think that was the intention of creating a separate balance for, or a separate spot to keep that money. I, I don't think it necessarily expires.
There's another bill going through session right now to further fund this program, I believe, as well. Did Terry say it was like 50 million or something? I think it passed at one level, but had to still go to appropriations. So.
So they're upping it from six to 15?
Well, yeah, they're, they're looking at continuing funding of this program. But I don't know to what extent that will come through the legislature this year.
With this being overly on the $100,000 we approved in budgets passed for townships to apply for culverts? Did we approve that in our budget again this year to?
Yes.
Put that fund up? So we've got that $100,000 plus whatever this comes in. And while the programs aren't related, it's, I mean, I look at the past, in the last couple of years, we've had that fund and we haven't, we haven't used it.
No.
And townships haven't applied to, I don't know what's left in each of those funds, but if we rolled them over to general at the end of the year, what we did with it. But at the same time, I'm not seeing all this money coming in. Wouldn't do a lot, but at the same time, we haven't done anything with, the townships haven't requested any money we've already put up. But I guess my concern is that it may be minimum maintenance roads might be an issue, but I think the timing is difficult. I don't think we can get those minimum maintenance roads removed or move back to, for a township to, to accept that levy and accept that cost of maintaining them is, is pretty expensive too. So I think they'll have some serious discussion on that part. But I, again, I, I, I don't know that the requests are going to be there something, because we haven't used the 100,000 a year for the last two years.
It'll be interesting to see if we get, what, you know, applications we do get in. So. Because they have similar size requirements that we had as well. Right?
Correct.
For the 16 square feet.
Yes.
So. We'll see.
We want to make sure the requirements are the same.
Would it, we just had our towns and township meetings. However, when we, I mean, if we're not seeing something, is that something we call another meeting and say, hey, we have deadlines here. Are you going to use this or you're not going to use it? Or, you know, just to hear back from them of their thoughts, rather than just kind of sitting here waiting to hear if somebody comes in and all of a sudden, nothing comes in?
We did have that meeting, was it August last, was it August last year, where we invited all of the townships in, you know, again, out at the BCOAC and, and talked about this program. So I, and, and I think after, towards the end, during Brian's report, towards the end of the meeting on Monday, we had further discussion with the townships there on this program as well that day. So I think they're all very, very well aware of it because Terry took her entire time at that meeting up to, just, pretty much to discuss this program or talk about this program. So. I think the big thing is just getting the information out to the townships now about how they can start working on those improvement plans. And what they need to know is how to access the culvert inventory information online. So.
And that's the deal at our meeting. We, we asked the question of the townships. If we lowered our requirements for the minimum size, a smaller culvert to qualify, we asked them what other projects, you know, there was, there was tree removal or graveling, you know, we kind of talked about that too. We've got to keep that in mind also.
I, I wonder if part of the, part of the challenge in utilizing the funds is technical assistance and support and getting the applications made. And in that case, would we be better served to provide a couple of key opportunities for technical assistance as opposed to setting up a program that people are having a hard time accessing because they don't know how to navigate it?
Just the idea of, of the 100,000 that we proposed, we had said for culverts and had that idea. But now there's a state culvert program. Maybe we should look at taking our 100,000 and re-appropriating it for other projects that don't fall underneath this.
And we have talked about that before, specifically about, because.
We haven't done that yet.
Gravel and snow removal have been major complaints of the townships for the last several years.
And some, some of those tree removals too, within the roadway.
But maybe we don't do that for this budget year, because these programs will come in, they'll get funded. And if they're, if we would be surprised by more applications than, for these small structures than what the state culvert program, maybe we could use some of our $100,000 and get a bunch of them done. We'll see.
So are we putting together a one-pager with how to navigate the process? Is that something that Brian could help us put together? Or do we need some of that to come from Lori in terms of dates? Or can we collectively figure out how to make that happen to get something to the township supervisors?
I think I can work with Brian and we can put something together.
Okay. I, I think when we send that out, it might be important to remember the whole conversation that took place at the beginning of the meeting on Monday about how to contact the townships. And there were a lot of people that said, please don't email me because I don't look at email. So I, I, I think we need to keep that in mind. Some people do email, but some of our township supervisors do not do email.
And I think what I would do is send out a letter to every township supervisor, treasurer, clerk. Because we've discovered if you send it to one person, they might hold the mail till, till a meeting, so they could share it with everybody. So yeah, we just want everybody getting all of the information. So I think that's what we would do.
That sounds great.
Couple last things. I did get a call from the Swiftell Center. They are looking at doing Uncle Sam Jam, kind of re, kind of restarting that, kicking that off again for the summer. In the past, the county has given money towards that event. And they're wondering if, kind of just gauging our partnership interest in that again for 20, for 2022. Over the past several years, I think, I believe it's been $1,500 that we've done on that go towards, you know, the fireworks display and the events held as part of Uncle Sam Jam for the community. Is that, right now, they're just sort of gauging partnership interest. So is that something that the commission is interested in partnering with again?
That comes out of the commission's public relations.
Public relations. Yeah. And there would be budget there for that.
I'm in favor of it.
Potentially. There may be a few other conversations that have to happen, but yeah.
Okay.
Potentially.
And then just the only other thing on the calendar upcoming that I know of is this Saturday is the Legislative Forum here at the Chambers at 9:30. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
I do not. Anybody else? Moving right along. Commissioner reports and discussion items. Commissioner Pierce, we'll start down there.
I, the week before, I'd had my first domestic abuse meeting, shelter meeting, I should say. And I toured the shelter and that was interesting. I hadn't been in there for years and saw some things where maybe we could do some stuff. And it'll be, it'll be interesting sitting on that board this year. On February 3rd, Public Affairs, our meeting was all about the forums and getting ready, other things that need to be done as relates to the legislature this year. On February 7th, I attended the Joint Jurisdiction Meeting between the county and the city planning and zoning boards. Our goal is, we scheduled two more meetings, and Bob can correct me if I'm, got my, got this wrong. I think our goal is to have the Joint Jurisdiction Ordinance to the County Commission and the City Council by the 1st of June. Did I say that right, Bob? So hopefully this summer, we'll be seeing public hearings on the Joint Jurisdiction Ordinance. We'll see how that goes. On February 8th, I attended a Zoom meeting with the ICAP CEO and Lake County Commissioner and a Moody County Commissioner. And I was appointed to serve as the liaison for ICAP for the 2022 year. And then we talked about maybe some ways of looking toward the future, how we would maybe rotate that position between the three counties that we're part of the district of. On February 10th, we had a joint powers meeting. And at that joint powers meeting, we made a decision to postpone the veneer project. And the reason for that is, I think it was, was it $180,000, real close to $180,000 to fix the veneer. And I was of the opinion, and there were enough other people that agreed, why would we spend $180,000 on that? For something that most people don't even notice when they come in the building. And so we're going to wait and maybe look at trying to fix the underlying problem with the humidity in the building and, and get some of that taken care of before we look to see what we need to do on the veneer project. Okay? On February 12th, I attended the Zoom Legislative Forum with Districts 4 and 7, and that went well. As Stacy said, we have the last legislative forum this Saturday here in this room at 9:30. I believe it's District 4 and District 7. If you're interested in coming, that would be great. On February 14th, I was at the Town and Townships meeting in the morning. I couldn't be there in the afternoon. But I have to say that Jacob's presentation, he always does such a great job explaining to the townships what they need to do on the real estate appeals. It's just, he does a great job. And on February 2nd, February 9th, and February 16th, I attended the Zoom meeting with Matt Krogman, the lobbyist for the city, the county, and the whole kit and caboodle as relates to issues going on in the legislature. Those meetings are very interesting. We will have our, every Wednesday at 4 o'clock until our last meeting, which is on March 16th. And Stacy has sent out the dial-in number information or the Zoom information on that, if you're interested in attending. It is very interesting information.
Quick question on that. Is that something that's noticed that allows all of us to get on there? Or, you know, is that, does that become a forum issue on those types of calls? Because if four of us are on that call at the same time, does that constitute a forum?
I guess that'd be a Dan Nelson question.
I mean, we're not a decision-maker. But.
It's informational.
It's informational. Can we all be on it? Or if we put it on our last agenda of, of that type of meeting, that, that allows us to be on it because it's noticed publicly? Make sure that it's noticed at the bottom of the agenda. So I, because I just didn't know if I could, you know, I know you're going to be on it. And, you know, and we're not voting on anything. We're just, it's more informative and that type of stuff. So do a forum, does that forum thing come into effect on a, on a meeting like that? Is my, my question. my, my question.
And that would be all I have to report. Mr. Bartley.
All righty. On February first, this is obviously on the city side of the planning and zoning, and I'm on the county side. So we're at odds. But not, not, not that much anyway. No, we pretty much agree on most of those things. But hopefully we'll get this accomplished in the first part of June and get this process done. It's taken about four or five years. February tenth, the detention center meeting, and I'm going to defer to Larry. He was there. So I don't take up all the time here because I want to spend a little bit of time on the NACO meeting that I went to out in Washington DC. And we just got back, Bob and I. I attended probably five meetings over about nine hours for ARPA. Most of those meetings were conducted by accounting firms, kind of like our, our firm that we hired through First District. Every one of them had a similar theme and theory of how they interpreted the ARPA rules. And it was amazing. I could have just followed the same group of people that went to each one of them because, and asked each one of them the same questions. And, but got different answers from some of them on some of the things. So NACO has worked really closely with the Department of Treasury on these rules. And they've made a lot of changes and they're still making some changes. As I said earlier, you have your final rules and then you have your final, final rules. And now the final, final, final rules is amended or changed by the treasury. So it's, it's still a little bit of a floating target. But it has also opened up a lot more of the funding as it's, as it's been amended and changed. In particular for smaller counties like ourselves. And we'll, hopefully we're going to have a meeting here shortly on, on exactly how we want to move forward with expending those funds. There's a lot of counties, a lot of larger counties that have spent a lot of the money already. Some of them have done it wisely and some have been advised at these, at all four, four or five of these presentations that they probably are a little bit in violation. But they were larger counties that had to use a different method and different reporting method than we're going to be required to do. But I think we need to get together and decide when we want to look at expending these monies and establishing a policy to follow. Things like our roofing thing today and some other small things are, that qualify for that type of ARPA funding. Even the lighting in the, the weed department today would be, but she's also asking for funds from another association. So you can't, can't double dip with ARPA funds. So you want to be very careful if you have funds that are available from another source that you don't use ARPA funds in compliance with it simply because of record keeping becomes, you have to follow all state and federal regulations. Even though we may be under that ten million dollar threshold, you can't decide you're going to fix a section of road and say this, two miles of road is going to cost this and we're going to do it. Well, there's federal regulations on building the road and replanning the road. You have to follow all those regulations. And you have to document that you did, which we would do on any project anyway. But at the same time, there's going to be some requirements. The opposite side of that is you could take a project and, and relate it somehow to, to one of the four categories, and I'll pick on public health. You could take each of those categories and, and in a very simple, one paragraph explanation of how it ties into public health. It could be something as simple as, as an air exchange system somewhere in a, in the courthouse or in this building and say, well, it's a public health issue. It's government services. We have to pay for it. These funds were intended to do those things for counties. These funds were not intended to just mitigate COVID response. There's, there's buildings, there's roads, there's bridges. Those become a little bit tougher. Services. I know First District has suggested that we use some money in services for payroll and use it all there and figure out how to move those things around. That was kind of frowned upon a little bit by most of these people if they're simply because of the, it's, it's, you're, even though you're under the ten million, you could probably do it and you can do it the justification. There are better ways to justify spending that money to the public. And payroll is not probably one of those. Bonus payments, another one that they said you need to be very careful on how you do that, even though you don't, you, long story, story short, gets longer. I'm not going to cover it all today, but it was very interesting. I came back with a lot of information. We had a program this last week that Larry and I were at and, and Bob. And it basically reiterated everything that's come down the pipe. So most of those things are, are going, it's, it's opening up better than closing down. Let's just put it that way. So we're going to be able to do more things. But I think we need to have a meeting, a work session to, let's just get down to what we want to do. I suggest you go out and you ask for RFPs, proposals from, now I'll pick on the fire department. So that's why I already brought that up once. They need to come out with a proposal, a wish list, so to speak, but list all their items so we can say, you know, we're not going to obviously spend a million dollars on, on fire department or all the fire departments. But it might be, might be equipment. It could be an ambulance. It can be a fire truck. It could be all kinds of other things. But then we need to prioritize within the money that we have. And it will be one-time expenses. I think Larry could probably, we have, we have fire departments whose suits they wear and go into fires. Maybe only two or three guys have suits that are certified. The rest of them don't because they can't afford to buy the suits. They're kind of expensive. And the suits basically only have about, and I think Bob checked on this, a ten-year lifespan. You know, and after that, they're not certified. So then you'd be, you run into a little bit of a liability. Yeah, if you, if you send somebody into a building with outdated suits. So those are the things we need to look at in public safety area, along with mental health issues. That's a big one in the ARPA funds. Because there's obviously never enough resources for, for mental health. And it goes from structures, new buildings, additions to buildings, renovations of buildings, salaries, staffing, all those types of things are considered. Equipment needs, furnishing needs. There's, it's pretty wide open right now. But we need to decide, we need to sit down with those organizations and ask for a report of what their needs are so that we can make some determinations. Those needs have to have a price attached to it, or at least an estimate of some sort. We have to identify these projects by the end of twenty twenty-four. We have to expend this money and be done with it by the end of twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. It's, it's got to be spent. So we can't hang on to this money for 10 years. We have to, we have to start looking at those projects now. And we have to make our discussions on how we want to do it. And I took too much time. That completes my report today.
Mr. Jensen.
On February first, I had a pipeline safety meeting with Bob Personnel. It was a, there was five or six different companies there that actually have pipelines within Brookings County. And it was basically a safety, safety orientation and what to do and what not to do. On the second of February, I attended a conservation meeting in the morning. They're excited. They're getting a lot of people signing up for some seedings and trees planted. But they have a common problem. They, they need part-time employees to help plant all these trees and stuff. They're looking for help. If you know anybody that'd like to be outside in the summer, get ahold of the Conservation District. On the fourth, in the afternoon, I went with Commissioner Krogman, met with a representative from South Dakota GFNP. They have a additional employee that's going to have an office out at the OAC. And we're kind of looking at some possible expansion, maybe. I'll let Ryan cover that a little more. On the tenth, I attended a jail meeting in the morning. Demolition is going along pretty good. They've, in the old part, it's interesting. It's all opened up in there. And we also talked about the roof project. And as, as we approved it today, it was much needed so we can have, like Mr. Bartley said, one roof. We won't have to go back in and patch it in at a later time. On the fourteenth, I attended the towns and township meeting. Terry Pritchard did a good job of opening up discussion on when to have the meeting and the townships are all involved. And they, I think they got a pretty good remedy for holding the meeting on the Thursday before their annual township meeting. Like Commissioner Pierce noted, Jacob did a real good job of his presentation, an explanation on appeals and for all the township members. The weed meeting was, like I said, it was well attended. Hopefully next year it'll go a little smoother and it'll be later, a little later in the, in the year. But it went quite well. On the seventeenth, I attended the Aid Bailey webinar with Mr. Bartley and Krogman on the ARPA funds. And Mike covered most of that. And I agree, we, we should sit down and have a discussion amongst themselves and decide what we're going to spend the money on. That's all I have.
Mr. Krogman.
All right. Thank you. February fourth, like Mr. Jensen said, we met with Emmett Kaiser from GFNP. A tour we gave to Game Fish and Parks Secretary from Pier was out. They had their quarterly meeting in Brookings, and so we invited him out there. And all of the Game Fish and Parks Commissioners were there. And, and it went really well. There was a lot of positive comments. They are, they did bring a new person on that they're looking for office space for. And I guess I, I reached out to Emmett, who sat on our board for the BCOAC when we first started this. He's a regional director and just wanted to keep the conversation going about their needs and our potential partnership out in that building there with Game Fish and Parks and, and us that they always see there. You know, there seems to be a lot of checkmarks that we all are working together, like programming and outdoors and shooting and shooting sports and, and all of that good stuff. So he's going to go back to his, his group back there at the state level and we'll talk about, want to know what their needs were, what they were looking for, potential expansion of, of their services, whether it's a new, an, an additional conservation officer, or if it's more biology employees. But to try to find out what they're looking for, and maybe we could partner with them on expansion of the OAC for them, which then they would turn around and pay rent and we'd get some money coming back in and make it a little bit more sustainable, profitable for us. And then also really good partnership with Game Fish and Parks. So that meeting went really well. Emmett's been a great supporter of ours. And we just want to continue that conversation with GFNP. So it was a good meeting. On the tenth, and actually I ended up testing positive for COVID on the week of the seventh through about the fourteenth, fifteenth. So a lot of my meetings were either by phone or Zoom. So on the tenth, I conducted a meeting for Brookings County Housing by phone. And we just got everything we needed to get done for those months, approving the bills and approving everything there. On the eleventh, I had a growth partnership board meeting. So I was on Zoom for that. Went through budget, approved budget there and, just to finalize everything for that. Had a special beta meeting by, by Zoom that we talked about compensation for our interim director for beta. And so we got that finalized and figured out. That same day, I had a Zoom meeting for Brookings Housing Study Management Committee, give us update of how things were coming along on the Brookings County Housing Study, city and Brookings collaboration on that one. Things are coming along there. We still, you know, our, I still, I think we still have on our county website, the poll there, the, you can fill out. That's, the survey, I think, is still going. It's kind of hard to find. It kind of gets buried as we, as we add stuff to our website. But if you're still interested in doing that, you certainly can fill that out. But they'd like to try to end that by the end of this month so that they can start compiling everything and start putting everything together for their, their presentation. And then on the seventeenth, I was not able then to attend the towns and townships meetings on the fourteenth. I apologize for that. And then on the seventeenth, we had, I did an ARPA funds overview. And then during that, I had to leave early because we had another Brookings County Housing Committee meeting. And so we, we did that with the major groups, which is the mayors of Aurora and Volga and, and Jacob's on that. And we have some rental property owners on that. So that was the management committee. And that one was a little bit larger overview. So that's it.
Long three weeks, Commissioner Krogman. Long three weeks. The fourth, so February fourth, a couple of times we, Stacy and Kristen and I met to kind of strategize our pay plan alignment strategy and prepare for union negotiation conversations. So the fourth, we had the first of those meetings. Participated in the joint powers board, which Commissioner Pierce already discussed. Later that day, on February tenth, we had the PP. What's going on with that? Sixteenth, the BEDC board met and officially received Tim Reed's resignation from the board and official appointment as the CEO for BEDC. And so there's some board assignments and some committee assignments that are being reshuffled as a part of that. Generally, it sounds like things are going well in spite of the fact that his time is split at the moment between session and BEDC. And we had Matt Krogman participate in that meeting to give us kind of a legislative update as it relates to economic development. Kind of hashed through a few policy standpoints for BEDC on items that are divisive, making sure that we understand how we deal with electronic voting versus something like that. If there's a, a bill that not everybody agrees with and we've got some discussion, just kind of crafting policy around how to handle those types of things. The sixteenth, we met again to kind of go through some of that pay plan alignment step two. And then the seventeenth, I also participated in the ARPA webinar. There's a lot of good information, a lot more open than it has been before. But I agree that the, the general idea that you pay salaries and then use everything else in the general fund savings seems like a complete poorly, poorly managed idea. And then last night was the Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Board meeting. And the discussion of expansion continues. They're looking for additional temporary office space. They've got three clinical positions open at the moment, and they are currently full in terms of where to put things. So the staff break room, some of their conferencing spaces have all been converted to individual clinical service provider offices. So they no longer have large group spaces available in the facility. And they're looking at their plans for expansion in the next 12 months. So they want to make sure that they are planning appropriately to either acquire property, expand the footprint of their existing facility, relocate temporarily while an expansion would go on, all of those kind of logistical challenges that come with the need to continue growing staff and continuing to provide for, you know, Robyn's, Robyn's diversion classes are typically 12 attendees. And right now she's hosting those in her office, if I'm not mistaken. She's got a small conference space, but that's the only space that you can fit enough people in, in the entire building. So there's no staff break room, none of that anymore. It's all offices. And they are still going to be short by three offices in the next two months with current staff openings. So the demand is very high and the space is very limited. So trying to figure out how we move forward with that. And we've sort of separated into four sub, subcommittees to start attacking things like fundraising efforts, others that would handle temporary relocation logistics, others that would handle building planning, putting together an RFP for design services, construction management, those types of things. So it'll be a busy year for that board, kind of getting ready for a, a future expansion. So, and that would be my report. Any other questions or follow-up on any of those items? Hearing none. We'll move on to item 12, executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law, section one dash twenty-five dash two, parentheses one and four, for personnel and contract negotiations. Do we have a motion to enter executive session?
Move.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will resume at 11 o'clock.